I would entertain the motion for approval of the agenda.
Summate.
Anybody in favor? Put your hand please. Opposed? Communications. Anything from the audience? No? Recognition, Dr. Hostetler.
Actually have a couple of these to take care of. The first, I want to talk about our feature teacher. And last spring, Mindy Southern was elected as our teacher of year and therefore as our de facto feature teacher. However, I wanted to honor another gentleman as well, somebody who has really done a lot of work with our kids, who has taken control of some scores that have in some ways suffered and had it, he's had an immense sense of personal responsibility, worked consistently to take care of business with those kids and has taken an intense personal interest in each of those kids' well-being. He's a gentleman I'm proud to consider a member of our faculty and would be tickled to have 99 more like him. I'd like to ask Mr. Bill Hoffman to come forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
In addition to our feature teacher, I would like to honor our Heartland hero, and that's a particularly well-selected name in this case. We're going to honor Lisa Mingwasser with this, and Lisa has put in tireless effort into ensuring that our campaign for the American Heart Association has been successful. And over a period of two years between Farmington and North County, we have raised tens of thousands of dollars, which is a pretty spectacular thing. And even though I did have to have my picture taken in a North County hat, which was deeply shaming, the truth of the matter is, it's the American Heart Association that wins, and it's due in large part to Lisa's efforts. So Lisa, would you please come forward?
Thank you, I tried. But thank you very, very much for allowing me to do this. I got to work with the kids again and got to go to all the schools and got to represent Farmington High School, which will always be in my heart. Thanks.
Thanks. Student voices? CTA? We had one letter. You all got to see that, I think. Okay. Informational items. Sarah Long, MSIP 5, and your group of commandeers. Dr. Kraus and Dr. Hostetler are going to help.
It's my pleasure to talk with the board a little bit about MSIP 5. As you know, this is a transfer from MSIP 4 by the State Department, and it really goes 100% live next year, but that's how accreditation happens for school districts. And you'll note in the report that basically we have 90% of the points where we have actually lost points is in attendance. We are actually reviewing our attendance policies to match the new criteria, and it's that students are there 90% of the time, basically, of available time, which is a different way. Even though we may have 94 or 95% attendance, if we don't have 90% of our kids there 90% of the time, you actually can have that anomaly. So we are losing points there. As always, we have strong achievements, stronger than the state average, which we're proud of, but we're never where we need to be. So you're going to hear from each one of our building principals about where their achievement stands this year, also where their groups have highs and maybe a few challenges that they're going to be addressing as well. The first school that we're going to ask to speak with you is the high school because you'll find ACT on the MSIP 5 report, as well as Dr. Hostetler has it as part of his achievement report. So we'll start with the high school.
Although the ACT and the EOC scores, which are part of the MAPS series, are separate items in MSIP 5, I wanted to include both sets of performance data on one sheet, simply because it's really easy to look at this, and it's kind of a pretty straightforward crib sheet of what happened at the high school last year. The ACT, one of the most important things to note, and Mr. Rubel has been talking about this since I met him. The ACT insists that they do in fact take the highest of any given student's score, but they appear to take the most recent. So if we were to utilize the most recent ACT scores for an average, we would in fact have 22.6 rather than 22.4, or 22.2. And while 22.2 is good, 22.6 is, for obvious reasons, better. We are continuing to work with students on their ACT scores. We have many of our kids in the ACT prep classes, and in fact, Ms. Pruitt and I began meeting with seniors individually yesterday to talk about what they needed to do to improve their scores. She focused on those who had scored well on the planned test during their sophomore year, which is an indicator of how well they'll do on the ACT itself, and I focused on those kids who scored 20 or 21, asking them to retake that test now that they have more classes under their belt in an effort to get them above that state average and break the line on 22. So we're moving towards that goal of continuing to raise those ACT scores. In terms of the EOC, pardon me, we have some very strong showing, particularly ELA 1, ELA 2, Biology, and American History, and in each of those areas, we are significantly above state average, and the truth of the matter is, we have been for quite some time. Under MSIP 4, we've been focusing on the percentage of students that are either proficient or advanced. Under MSIP 5, we're going to look at MAP Performance Index, MPI. Simplest way to put this is if we can average 400 points, our kids are by and large proficient. That's sort of the magic number. And if you look at those index scores to the far right of each set of scores, then you can see that, in the case of Biology, for example, we're well above 400. And in ELA 1, ELA 2, and American History, we're very much within striking distance. So we're well within our goals there. There are some areas that need some attention. One of the things that really isn't shown clearly in these data sets is that some of our sub-populations need some additional focus, specifically special education students. And I've worked extensively with Dr. Kraus to ensure that we're taking care of business with our co-teaching classes. Additionally, we are showing scores that aren't growing sufficiently in both Algebra 1 and American Government. The one caveat with the Algebra 1, however, is that for the first time in, well, I suppose the history of the MSIP, the students that took Algebra 1 in 8th grade were not included in our scores. And if we do calculate their scores into the high school scores, then rather than, ew, where did we go? 57% proficient and advanced, we scored at 69.8 proficient and advanced, which is very much in line with where we should be. So that is a little anomalous as we look at this data. By and large, however, I think we're on track to do very well with this. Already, our teachers are beginning, began actually during the summer to analyze what needed to happen. We've adjusted curriculum, we're looking at scope and sequence, and we're going to do what it takes to make sure these scores continue to rise. Are there any questions?
Are your end-of-course exams, are they staying the same? I know we're getting the new, but your end-of-course exams will be basically the same as they've been?
They should be comparable, but there may be some transition as well. And there's some level of ambiguity on that, and that's something-
There's a new contract that the state has signed with CTP McGraw-Hill, which will also impact the end-of-course exams. So they'll be aligning more to the Common Core standards. We already know, 3 through 8, definitely, and then those high school span tests will be Common Core-focused, but there is a new contract with the state, so we'll see how that plays out and how many years it takes them to do that. Great question, thank you.
State average ACT, I mean, 21.6, I believe.
That's correct.
And I think national average is a 21.1, so.
We're winning.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I believe Tom McKinnney is representing middle school.
I got called in tonight as a pinch hitter, so I didn't have as long to go over this data, but that's all right, I think I know it pretty well. So anyway, you guys all should have a sheet just like this up there in front of you, so as I go over this. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions about anything. We have, up first, we listed our 2013 scores by grade level in math and English Language Arts. You'll see there with 7th grade math and 8th grade math, you'll see by grade level kind of where we're scoring. You also see by cohort groups, as far as how they've been doing over a period of time. One thing that, I know we're supposed to talk about celebrations and also concerns, we have several things to celebrate, but we also have many concerns that we're going to address this school year and over the next few years, and I'll get into those in just a second. But as you look at those scores, if you have any questions about those, you know, I'd be happy to answer that. A few other things that we want to talk about as far as celebrating, the following areas and subgroups that met the school board goal of 4% improvement. And we have there the math overall, 8th grade. We met that goal also with the free and reduced lunch population, that's the SES. Okay, we met the 4% improvement goal there. 8th grade English Language Arts total, and also 8th grade free and reduced, or SES. Okay, so we, those are things we wanted to celebrate as well. If you look at the state averages down here, on the 8th grade math, well, the state average dropped significantly, but in 8th grade math, you'll see that the Farmington Middle School students improved, whereas the state average had dropped. You know, one, I don't have on there the chart that also shows, we're above state average in 7th math, also 7th and 8th English Language Arts, but it was a significant difference with 8th grade math. So that's why we included that as an area that we would celebrate. We have lots of concerns. One thing that's not listed, science is a concern, but the two things that I did list, math, IEP students, for one, you know, we're not seeing the kind of growth there that we'd like to see. Also, the cohort groups experienced a drop in scores as they enter 7th grade. So that's a concern that we're going to address. Also, English Language Arts, IEP students, you know, just, we have really struggled in those areas, so those are areas that we're trying to address. And we have some ideas about how we're going to do that. Overview of our plan of improvement. You see a lot of things listed there. These are just some of the ways that we plan on improving. And the way we analyze this data, of course, we have the IBDs, we also have iReady data, and we have our summative scores. So we make sure that we take that information, we want to do something with it, we want to find out, you know, how our kids are doing, and continually track them and see where the areas of deficiency are and how we can address those. And we have lots of ideas listed here with math and English Language Arts. As well, we're attacking science the same way. It's not listed on this report. Is there anything I can answer for you?
Improvement's good.
Improvement's good. Improvement's good.
And I would like to say I appreciated the data team that Sarah, Ashley, and I sat in on, and that's been close to a month ago.
Yeah.
But I felt like the middle school really did a good job of digging into those scores and then looking at areas that they could improve, and I thought they took a very defined look.
Sure.
And have a good plan moving forward.
Yeah, and this was just a nutshell of the information that they presented. So yeah, they did, the team did a really nice job.
They did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't quite as organized as Mr. McKinnney, who gave these to you ahead of time, but-
We'll take them.
For Lincoln. Okay. Well, Lincoln, we've been up and down, and I will tell you that having the teachers do the data teams was very educational for all of us. At first, it was like pulling my teeth to get anyone to do this with me, and I'm notorious for digging into the data and handing it to my teachers. And I go through it with them, and we have good conversation, and I think they know it, but whenever I watched them dig through it themselves, man, they really knew it. And they found things that was enlightening to me and enlightening to the building as a whole. Today, we met with our comm arts 5th grade, or sorry, English Language Arts 5th grade and 6th grade, and the members of the team that were on, from the English Language Arts Department, presented the data. And just like my data team did, they wanted to beat the dead horse, you know, and I finally said, "Guys, the data is what it is, and we have to move forward from here." So, not that it is horrible, horrible, but they expect better from themselves, and I know Dan and I expect more for our kids at Farmington, and everyone is on board at Lincoln to make that happen. Some, you know, it's right there in black and white for you, but let's just say there's one plus, that math in 6th grade went up, a very slight decrease in 6th grade math, but yet, we lost some kids. And to me, and I know to my staff, that is heart-wrenching. On a positive note to leave, we are above the state average in 6th grade ELA in math and in math in 5th grade. Some of the things that we're doing, we've been trying to implement RTI. This is our third year of implementing it. We've had some good PD, we had someone come in and kind of validated from the outside that we are on the right track. We, the teachers got together, they identified their essential learner, learning outcomes, and did a pre-assessment on that. We had a two-week rotation. I would love for you all to come by and see it sometime. It's in the mornings on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, again, starting in November. We're taking this week to review it, revise it, and develop a plan again. But it's really causing a lot of ownership, a lot of trust among staff. Dan, I walked in one day and I thought that he was going to have a revolt because he sent out there, and I was thrilled that he did it, a challenge to the staff to say, "Okay, we're going to work on math division for pride time this week. Show us what you've got." We are embracing Google Docs. They shared their lessons. I think some of them were a little apprehensive, but you saw comm arts teachers teaching division through, I'm going to say the wrong thing, but something that has to do with area. You saw science teachers really digging in and teaching kids how to write summaries. It was just, it's really neat. We've seen, Dan and I were talking the other day, and if I had to put a plug in for technology, please, if we, whatever we can do to get technology into those classrooms, there is active learning going on all the time. Whenever we do our scheduled observations, and we said, "Your scheduled observation has to have technology involved in it," it's amazing. The one I did, the teachers were doing, using Edmodo, which, don't ask me to explain it because I don't really know, but the two of the kids came and explained it to me, and one of the girls said, "I really, really like this," and I said, "Well, tell me why." And it's a little girl I've had since Washington Franklin, and I said, "Tell me why you like it." And she said, "Well," she said, "because I can ask questions." And knowing this little girl, she's not one that's going to ask questions in class. She's going to sit back and kind of blend in and not be noticed. And I said, "So when you ask questions, do you ask it to the whole class, or do you just ask it to Ms. Moore?" And she said, "I can choose." So if it's a homework question, like, what's the assignment to be sure about it, she can ask in general. But it's one that affects her confidence level, she can send it directly to that teacher, and that teacher knows that she needs help in that area, and they can have a good conversation. So, and that's my plug for technology, because my, and my teachers, I say my, Dana, my teachers, he went and observed a classroom, our 5th grade ELA got together and they made their first module, literacy design collaborative module, and he said, "I've watched the same lesson at least nine times, and this was the first time I've seen kids think as deeply as they were in that particular lesson." So I'm glad to see that they are using technology, not to just have it to look at, but they are using it to cause deeper thinking and deeper projects and outcomes from it. So, one of the other things we took to the next level also were the professional learning communities. We have six, five different learning communities, attendance, behavior, facility, safety, response to intervention, and the social committees is like our parent committee, and everybody has ownership. So then they have a leader that comes back to the advisory leadership team. We know what's going on in every building, or in every area of the school, and really trying to progress that way as well. So, I could rattle on and on, but I'm not going to because I know there's three or four other schools behind me. So if you have any questions, let me know, or just come on by. Okay?
Thank you.
Good as that right there. Did they copy?
Forgot my glasses. That's okay. I think I can do this.
You want mine?
Look at the chart, just as you looked at Angie's, I think we kind of all put them together and see our three-year trend, which is what we wanted you to do. Again, Jefferson is struggling. I'm just going to say that. We're working, we're working very hard.
Thank you, thank you.
To bring up our scores, but our, we're struggling in our math for the last three years. I think as I look this year at my 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade, and their iReady scores and the scores coming up, I can see a huge trend toward things moving up in the other direction. So we're hoping this year, we've got a lot of hope that it is, but as you can see on the cohort data at the bottom, that we had a downward trend in our 4th grade population at comm arts, just a few points, and the free and reduced lunch, a significant nine-point drop. And the sped population, however, this year, a huge gain of 20, over 20 points, or close to 20 points, which, I put that in one of my brag items on the back, that all of my sped population from 3rd to 4th grade did meet their growth model, which we don't have from the state anymore, but they still did reach, if we did have the growth model, they would have received a proficient or a good mark, as they would in MAP, on the sped population. We're very proud of that. And again, our total MAP cohort in 4th grade, of course, increased also, but as the other two ahead of me, the three ahead of me, we still had some downward trends in our free and reduced lunch and sped populations. If you turn on the back, I have some brag points to go over with. Our Jefferson's attendance has always stayed high, except yesterday, which was an 89.6. This morning, we were like, I don't know what happened. We all, I had homecoming weekend or something, I don't know. But that's the worst, we never have one like that until the middle of the winter, usually at Jefferson, when we have flu maybe, and the board's calling to find out what's going on in all the buildings. But we're back up to 95.6 today, so they all bounced back on Tuesday, which was thrilling. But we've always had great attendance at Jefferson, and I credit that to the teachers being on top of it, Mark Petty, and everyone helping with that at all times. Also, another brag point that we had, as the other group said, we've stayed above, we have stayed above state average, even though we've dropped our ELA in 3rd grade is about a 48, and math is about a 51, 4th grade's 53 and 50 for the state, and we're way above that. So we were, that's a brag point. And I was extremely proud, last week we did an IPI walkthrough with our teacher, in my classes, and I saw a 6% gain in the student-led instruction in the core classes, which is, to me, a great accomplishment for all the teachers and what we're trying to do in Common Core and getting small groups instruction, which will help with our big elephant, as you say, our sped population and our free and reduced population, getting those in those small group populations. So we're proud of that. Again, our big concerns, I already went over that, extreme drop in math, and my yo-yo of my free and reduced lunch and my sped populations. I just go like this, and of course, Sarah and I have had long discussions about what's going on at Jefferson, and she said, you know, "I'm like a roller coaster over there." Him and I have had long discussions about my math. One year I'm up, one year I'm down, one year I'm up and one year I'm down. So hopefully with Common Core and some more consistent instruction in that, and iReady, that's going to come up. We do have a long list of things that we are doing and strategies to enhance, and it's kind of, I feel like I'm repeating when we're following the other ones, because we're doing a lot of the same things. One thing I talked to Ashley about this morning, we're part of a consolidated schools program down at Cape, from DESI, in both math and comm arts. We've been going down, I've been going down with a group of teachers for the last two years, and their specific purpose, which, believe it or not, we just really kind of found out yesterday, was, I hate to say that, but it's the truth. And you know, I'm at the point where I can just tell you the truth. And we were really going down the year wondering, "What are we doing?" And one day we were doing this, and one day we're doing that. But they said, you know, because the state is concerned about this huge gap, the elephant, the sped and the free and reduced lunch, and this team that we've got down there from all over, New Madred, everywhere, that we're trying to figure out how to close that achievement gap. I mean, this is no secret to anyone. What do we do? And we're down there working consistently on data, and yesterday was, and today, I talked about it to the group right before they came back from math today, and they got their act together, RPDC down at Cape, and we were on all day long down there, really coming up with going back, the teachers going back to the classroom, to their classrooms, to their other colleagues back in their school, give these assessments, grade that assessment, change that assessment, look at it again, give it to the students, and then they run with their data back down to Cape Girardeau, and we all look at it again, and they talk about it. So it is a huge effort now, I think that's very simple, right, but I, that's what I agree with. And we're going to do that four times this year. We've already started on one, and we're starting back, we're all starting on our second one now, to go back in and try to pick some of these weak items that we have, that, you know, again, these ones that we know as an elementary, prefixes, suffixes, and root words. Ouch. I mean, we've been, I mean, this is no, this is again, no secret. We've had this problem forever, and every year when we start looking at all of that, and we go, "Ouch, there we go again, we can't do prefixes, we can't do suffixes, and we can't do root words. What are we going to do to address this?" So again, we're back on that sort of thing, looking at it, but we're all looking at it globally with all the other schools. So I'm excited about that this year. I wasn't too excited last year, because two days out of your building down at Cape Girardeau all day long, and you come back and go, "What was that?" So, and now it is, it's turning into something very good. And also, the other thing, I just, I have to go over our iReady. I'm so thrilled with you as a board and our schools coming up with the money to put the iReadies in the classroom. I have tech night on Monday night, I have 50 students at least and parents in there working on computers with a different, either on the iReady or on the keyboarding or something, and the kids are on it every single day. Right now, they've clocked, oh, unbelievable hours. The parents are all going over their scores at conference time and seeing how, what gains they've made in both comm arts and math. And we got little, if you've been over there, we've got little computer buddies that they have going down the wall, that every time they gain 10 points, they get to go down the wall with their computer buddy. the wall with their computer buddy instead of their stallion this year. So they've, they've embraced it. My teachers have embraced iReady. They're using that data to drive their instruction in, not only classroom, but in tutoring after school. So I, it's not perfect and it's not the answer to all because, I mean, we still need individual instruction, we need to pull kids and still have small group instruction with teacher-led, but iReady really helps us know what students we need to, to look at. And the kids, of course, it's technology and they love technology. So if you have some time and Monday night and you just buzz over there for a while, we'd be loved to show off for you sometime. And I think that's long enough for me to talk up here. If you want any help with any of these other items that I addressed on here, just shoot me an email or something. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you didn't hear that, we're going in alphabet for Roosevelt.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over our map data that we have over the last three years at Roosevelt. So if you'll look at the first chart, you will see that blue is two thousand and eleven, green, yellow. And basically what the data tells us is that a couple of good things. Roosevelt's doing really well based on state averages, Missouri state average. So they're performing, math is performing well above state average. We're talking seventy percent of students proficient and advanced, so doing a really good job. Third and fourth grade both in ELA, you'll see that there's been a little bit of a gradual decline. Still performing well above state average, but we've got a little bit of a decline. So that tells us, hey, we need to back up, we need to look at, at what we're doing. And Roosevelt, we did that. We looked at our map data and brought each grade level in together and third and fourth grade separately. And I said, okay, what, what's different? Because I'm new, so what's different? What are we doing differently now than what we were doing then? And what can we do to help bring those ELA scores back up? And one thing they talked about was collaboration. And the second thing that they talked about was being able to utilize some intervention times. I think that they've had some title services in the upper grade levels at one point and now we don't have that now. And so with that, we've built in weekly collaboration within our grade levels, and that's not just Roosevelt, that's the other buildings as well, which is very beneficial. And at first they were a little bit hesitant about doing that, but now that we're attending the collaborative work project in Cape, they see the need for that and they're talking specifics, they're talking about specific assessments and they're talking about specific students. The second thing that we're doing is RTI time and we're gradually stepping into RTI time with one day a week for third grade, a fifty-minute block, and one day a week for a fifty-minute block with fourth grade as well. And we're using our title teachers, we're using, we're pulling our speech teachers, we're pulling anyone that we can to pull in those students and, and teach the skills that they need help with. So that's, that's our plan for bringing up our ELA scores back to where they were. So if you look at the back, you'll see cohort data. And if you're looking, you're basically looking at third grade students, where they scored, fourth grade students, same group of kids, how they scored as third graders, how they scored as fourth graders, and the differences there in math and ELA. So what are, what's Roosevelt excited about this year? We are excited about iReady. Our teachers are, are on board with the iReady program. We're using the diagnostic testing three times a year as well as the instruction, and that instruction can be utilized at school and at home with our parents. So those, we're really excited that that will help our scores as well. The weekly collaboration, just like I talked about, we're, same thing that we've done in the past with Care Team, talking about specific students, what need, what need our at-risk students, you know, what's wrong? What do we need to do? How can we help this child? Things like PBS, strategies, and professional development. Our weekly professional development has been a really good idea, so I have to say kudos to our superintendents on that because it's, it's a great plan and it's, it's helping teachers help students. So those, that's our strategies that we're looking at this school year. Our focus again is our iReady, our RTI groups, more effective training, attendance. You're going to hear probably the same things from each of the elementary school buildings, but we are looking at quarter, or excuse me, monthly incentives for attendance as well as quarterly. And then we'll have an attendance club, and I just honestly took Lincoln's idea with the attendance club and it seems to work, so we're going to continue that. We, we saw gains with that last year. And just that continued use of technology in the classroom to promote student learning. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to tell you that Kim has some students who don't attend very well, and she just came up to him and said, "Would you like to join my club?" And they're all so excited. They need them and selected for this fabulous club. And they probably don't a hundred percent understand they're working on their attendance, but they are really excited to be in the club.
Everybody has that.
Washington Franklin?
Hundred percent of people in the club.
Okay. Our data looks very similar. At the Washington Franklin, you can see with our map data, our third grade communication arts is declining. We are working on that. We are still above the state average when it comes to third and fourth grade communication arts and math. One way we're working on improving this is we're having focused weekly collaborations and they all have a focus to them, and there's an agenda expected and a reflection piece that teachers can have, and they're using that time productively to do things to enhance their lessons in their classroom. Our cohort data for third and fourth grade, what we're seeing is that when our kids move to fourth grade, they are making gains. So that's a good thing academically. Also, we have utilized iReady in the classroom for instruction in all grade levels, so we're using that as part of our centers in our classrooms, so that's been working out well for kids. Also, we started team teaching in second grade this year, which we're trying to better prepare. Second to third is a huge transition for kids and third grade's tough. So we're using second grade to team teach this year and it's hopefully going to be a good thing. We're going to see a better transition with our kids that way to better prepare them for having those two teachers in those concentrated areas. Also, we, when we did our data team, like the other principals have talked, it's kind of eye-opening because those teachers don't really get to talk to each other because we're in two separate buildings pretty much. And what we decided to do was have a vertical curriculum team at Washington Franklin. So we will have a representative from each grade level on ELA and one from math with a special services person on there, and they're going to meet quarterly and they'll be bringing their summatives and their curriculum together to figure out, you know, what's happening in each of those grade levels with curriculum, what's expected of those kids, because we're missing some common verbiage between one another of how we're teaching skills and it's nobody's fault, it's just we're kind of missing that link of the puzzle, a piece of the puzzle. So we will have that first one on November first and we're going to be looking at second quarter curriculum, figuring out how we can all work together in the different grade levels. Also, like I said, our collaborations, and then we have Care Team every six weeks where we're identifying kids, whether their needs are academically, socially, emotionally, we're trying to target each individual kid. Any questions? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Edie Knowles-Beazer is out, so stepping in is Kim Anstyn to do that report for us.
Yes, I'm, I'm really proud to be able to help out. And I got to work on a lot of the data teams with a lot of the different elementary schools, and so I was already scheduled to, to help out with Truman, so it just kind of worked out that, that I could, could help them with their presentation. So you might notice why they're testing out those things, I want to tell you a little bit about the demographics of Truman. Our enrollment is slightly down this year and, and yet our free and reduced population is up pretty, pretty significantly, about six percent. So that's just to let you know a little bit about what's going on there at kindergarten. Well, I have to tell you that kindergarten teachers look at a lot of individual student data. They really drill down to their kids and they're all about those individual students. And they've had a data board for a while that, that has data for each of the students for reading, and they look at it kind of as a whole, but they really never have attached numbers to it until we've got iReady. And so iReady has really been able to give them a source of data, to really look at data from, from a, from a school-wide picture. So this is really kind of new, this was kind of a new experience for our kindergarten teachers. So the data that we've decided to share with you today, this is window one to window two scale scores, okay? So you can see in ELA from window one to window two and in math, both raised about the same amount, up twenty-four to twenty-five scale score points. But from window two to window three, that would be like from January to, to May or along along those lines. We made significant gains in ELA, but math just pretty much slowed to a screeching halt there, which made our overall growth in ELA much more than in math. So that's definitely something that, that we're going to look at. And also, iReady data gave us a chance to look at some cohort data with kindergarten to first grade. That's the next chart on your, on your list there. You have reading iReady data. So you can see window, our kindergartners for last year, from window one, window two to window three, they ended the year at four oh three, they began first grade at four oh five. So that means over the summer, they actually raised to, it's not much, but the fact that they maintained, to me, is huge, that scale score in ELA. Not so much in math. So if you look in math, they went from three eighty-seven in window three, back down to three seventy-six. So that tells us that what we're teaching them, they're not necessarily retaining it as well in, in math. So that's something that is definitely a concern, is something we're going to look at. So if you turn it over, the other data point that we have in kindergarten is the rugby scores. And that's the piece of data that in the past, before we had iReady, that was really what they, they based all their data board on is their rigbies. And so I've compared last year's rigbies to, to the iReadys and for the students that were above on or below grade level. And I have the January score compared to the May. And you, you see we have a lot of students in the above and on in the rigbies in both, both in January and in May, and not so much, it doesn't kind of line out with iReady. We have very few iReady students that are above grade level in iReady and we have lots of on. The belows kind of stayed similar. So that is some, something that, that we, we definitely noted when looking at our data. So our data trends, our rugby and iReady scores were not aligned, aligned in the above and on grade level groups, and we want to work on that. And you might say, well, why don't we work on, the teachers feel like we need to kind of maybe move our expectations for our rugby up. They feel like there's probably a little room for, for wiggle there. There can, they will continue to try to move more of those iReady kids into the above, but I think their, their first point was to try to maybe do some adjusting with that rugby. It seems like if you have that many in, in January that already are above grade level, then we, we've got to work on that, maybe adjusting that. So that's what we looked at. And of course, our iReady scale scores are higher in ELA than they are in math, and we did more growing in ELA in, than in math. So our conclusions were that we have more data collection points in reading than math. Okay? So we have the read, we have iReady and we have rugby, but we only have iReady in math. We have Title I support in reading, but not in math. We tutor in reading at Truman, but not in math. We have a school-wide incentive program in reading, but not in math. And by a school-wide incentive program, that's where we get the parents all involved in, in making sure that reading is important, which we know it is, but maybe we need to look at math there a little bit. So our next steps, what we think we might do is to, as I mentioned before, kind of modify that rugby expectation, to start maybe providing some Title I support for our students in math, second semester, to provide tutoring in math in, starting in January, and to develop a school-wide incentive program for math, just to instill in parents that math is just as important as reading. And so the teachers are right now brainstorming on what they can do to put a program in place like their reader board, only maybe they're going to, I think they've kind of thrown out the counting board or something like that for, for math at Truman. So if you have any questions, I'll be.
So an average, an average scale score growth for a grade level would be what in the iReady? Are we talking thirty, forty points, fifty points, in that range?
No, I think it's more like thirty points.
More like thirty points.
Yeah, yeah, around thirty points. But they're definitely moving across that continuum, that scale score moves across that continuum. So there's, there's actually kind of an overlap.
Twice as much growth in ELA as in math.
Right. But you can see all their emphasis is on reading as far as tutoring and title support and, and parent involvement. It's all about the reading. And so that was just a big. It was, it was an eye-opener for them when they actually saw that on paper and they were like, oh, maybe, you know.
Title I and tutoring for math.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that was one of the things they asked me, can we do that? And I'm like, yeah, I'm pretty sure we can. So it's just a matter of shifting, obviously we can't probably hire any more staff, but it's a matter of shifting some of those, some of that staff to work with kids in, in math, so.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, how are the new competencies changing the math expectations in kindergarten? Are they?
Oh, it's changed them, it's changed them significantly, yes. One of the word, the buzzwords that, that we're using and hearing a lot at kindergarten is subitizing. And that's something that last year when we first started talking about subitizing with the kindergarten teachers, they were like, they can't do this, they'll never do this. But they are. And if you don't know what subitizing is, it's like if I put up the five fingers, you don't have to count them one to one, you just know it's five. But they're to supetize up to ten and twenty, and ten in a pattern and, and they can go up to, up to twenty in a pattern and that's be like a double ten frame and ten without, so. So if you just had random things, that they could count them without having to, just, just by grouping them in their minds, it's a mental, mental math thing. But it really has a lot to do with having good numbers sense. And the other thing is, we talked a lot about this and I don't know, I said I wasn't going to do this, but you asked. A kindergarten, I don't know, if you've had a kindergarten, they spend an awful lot of time counting one, two, count to a hundred, count to a hundred. But what we realized is, is that although that they can rote count one to a hundred, they had no idea what the value of those numbers were. They could repeat them in order like a song, but they had no idea what the value of thirty-four was or seventy-six was. And so when we do our counting board, that's one of the things that we're going to ask them to do, is understand the value of that. So they're be moving, as they're counting, they'll be moving tens, ones and tens blocks across, so. And that's, that was one of the things, the ideas that we talked about, so that they understand the value of, of those numbers and of course be able to count them as well.
Ms. Anderson, when, when they're, when they're doing their counting and trying to figure out the subtraction, are they, are they writing it or is it on the computer doing it and everything, you know?
Their assessment for, for being able to count has just been a verbal, one-on, one-on, they do an enormous amount of one-on-one assessments with their kids. I think they practice writing, but really writing from one to a hundred is, is, it's, it's part of their assessment, but it's.
Well, when you, when you said that, that they didn't understand what the value of that was.
Right.
I mean, to me, when, when I learned the math and everything, when you wrote it and you had to figure out that two and six is eight, you know, and you had to figure out how, how do you come to that?
Right.
That's what I'm saying. Is it on the computer or are they, are, you know, are they doing it, you know, trying to figure it out on the computer and then write it in? Or are they trying to, you know, the old-fashioned way where you're counting and, you know, like that?
Well, in, in math, one of the things that we, we learn, and especially with these little guys with all areas though, is that we should begin with concrete objects. So we actually start with them actually moving things like teddy bears and chips and things like that and base ten blocks, that would be the concrete. Then we move to pictures. So then maybe they're looking at pictures of a frog, three pictures and two pictures equals five pictures. And then the most abstract would be two plus five equals seven kind of thing. But really what I was talking about is more, I think they, they really had the value maybe up to ten, maybe even up to twenty, but beyond that, they didn't know like the value of thirty-four. They didn't understand that was three tens and four ones or all the, and what that meant, you know? So that's something that we're going to make sure that they understand the value of those numbers using those base ten blocks. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unless you all have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the items that you see there for discussion and I don't know that, is there any question to any of them from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consensual items.
Remove.
Second.
The motion and the second. All those in favor? Also, we have utilized iReady in the classroom for instruction in all grade levels, so we're using that as part of our centers in our classrooms, so that's been working out well for kids. Also, we started team teaching in second grade this year, which we're trying to better prepare, second to third is a huge transition for kids, and third grade's tough, so we're using second grade to team teach this year, and it's hopefully going to be a good thing. We're going to see a better transition with our kids that way, to better prepare them for having those two teachers in those concentrated areas. Also, we, when we did our data team, like the other principals have talked, it's kind[1783.12]